Welcome to the board meeting. We're so happy to see you here today. We have a couple of treats, we have awards, and we get to showcase our kids and some of our teachers. So it's going to be a good meeting. At this time, we are honored to have Fremont Middle School student Junius Strickland, who is going to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, and we are, he's agreed to perform our National Anthem as well. So where's the flag? Do you want to, here, do you want to speak in my mic?
Yeah, should I just hold it?
Yeah.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
You'll need the Pledge of Allegiance too?
Um, sure.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisibility and justice for all.
That's the wrong thing. We didn't, we were supposed to do both. That was great. Wow, 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 wow. Doesn't that just make your heart pitter patter with pride? It's great, man, that kid's got a future, that's for sure. So, thank you so much to Principal Danny Jardine for welcoming us this evening and giving us such a wonderful treat. I do want to ask for any members of the media, if you would let us know who you are. And if also, if you're online, please let us know. Also, reminder for everyone to mute their cellphones. And if you're wanting to participate in public participation, please fill out a card at the back of the room ahead of time. And for those who speak, board members, anybody at the podium, make sure you turn your microphone on and to speak, and turn it off when you are finished. So right now, we have Fremont Middle School Principal Danny Jardine. She's going to share wonderful insights and tell us about this awesome school.
Welcome, everybody. And I just have to say kudos to Junius because he just got pulled off the basketball court. He's literally playing a basketball game right now. So he, he does all the things. Okay, first slide. Okay, let's talk about what makes Fremont special. What really makes Fremont special is the people. Our staff go above and beyond every day, jumping in wherever they're needed, filling in gaps, and doing it all with heart. My favorite thing is when teachers pop into my office and say, "Do you have a minute? I have an idea." That's always the best sign. From our amazing sports staff to our teachers, everyone works together to make Fremont a great place for our kids. Fremont is also involved in the community as well. Our jazz band went to the VA to play for veterans last week. Our woodshop class partnered with Sleep and Heavenly Peace to build beds. Our leadership donated two to local charities from our Walkathon fundraiser, just to name a few things. And our students, they bring energy, creativity, and kindness that make this place come alive every day. We're constantly amazed by the teamwork and care that happens at Fremont on a daily basis. Regular attendance. So improving student attendance begins with strengthening sense of belonging. We used IRE data to, as evidence, to make a correlation that when students feel connected, they show up more. New initiatives like advisory and web for our sixth graders continue to build relationships and create community for every student. We're also enhancing communication with families through attendance letters so parents are informed and supported in getting their students to school consistently. To encourage positive habits, we're adding attendance incentives that recognize progress and celebrate the students who show growth. And just as a comparison, I went into our data and looking at the first quarter from last year to this year. Our regular attender rate, which is students that attend 90% or more, is up 2% from the same time last year. And our sixth grade cohort, which is a different cohort, of course, than sixth grade last year, but their regular attendance is 10% higher than last year. So hoping that some of the changes we've made this year are contributing to that. Ready for the next slide. Okay, language arts. Our language arts focus is centered in using data and collaboration to strengthen instruction. Our teachers are looking at MAPS data more frequently to ensure that students are properly placed in strategies classes for targeted support. And at the end of this first quarter, we were able to move some kids out that had made growth and then able to move other kids in because we, we had more kids that need strategies than the amount of sections we have. So we had to kind of first semester, second. So we were able to get some kids in quicker than just waiting until the semester. With the guidance of a secondary reading coach, we're looking forward to that. Teachers will receive coaching and resources to deepen literacy practices and also do some learning about the new secondary reading framework. We're also providing more collaboration time for departments to plan together and align instruction this year. We got feedback at the end of the year that departments wanted more time to be able to meet and collaborate. So we were able to put that into our plan. So with all the extra walkthroughs and additional time, we are hoping that teachers are receiving targeted feedback that'll help refine their instruction to improve our growth. Next slide. Okay, in math, our math department is working on building the strong foundations and continuing our work with TDG, focusing on mass sustainability and deepening instructional practices through Math Studio. Regular walkthroughs and data snaps help provide teachers with meaningful, actionable feedback. Teachers are also contributing feedback on the scope and sequence, and it's nice that it can be viewed as a living document and make changes as teachers feel some shifts need to be made to ensure pacing and materials are meeting our students' needs. As we move forward, we're working towards common assessments that will also give us some clear data to guide instruction and monitor growth across grade levels. Our science team is continuing to build capacity and instructional consistency across classrooms. Science teacher leaders are engaging in PD to strengthen instructional strategies and content alignment. Through collaborative walkthroughs with our teaching and learning team, teachers are receiving targeted feedback to support and improve experiences for students. And I know this has helped both Megan and myself receive the PD just to learn more about the different changes of the standards. They've shifted since I was in the classroom. So it's been great learning for us as well. The work is focused on ensuring that all Fremont students develop curiosity, critical thinking, and confidence in science exploration. And finally, my favorites. My favorite slide are bright spots and celebrations. And the people are who we need to be celebrating because it's the people that make Fremont thrive. Our staff go above and beyond every day, filling in the gaps, supporting one another, and just creating meaningful learning experience for students. We have clubs, we have seven or eight different clubs. We have elective classes that go above and beyond just your regular class. I'm really excited about the addition of web for our sixth graders. It's like a sixth grade version of Link Crew for the high school. And so it's been super fun. We just started to do our monthly activities with sixth grade, and it's just been a great experience so far. So I'm, I'm excited to keep moving that forward. Our eighth grade is getting ready to start first PD next week. To, we're working through the civics learning project to do an eighth grade community service project in the spring. And so I'm excited to learn more about what that entails and bring that to our eighth grade students. But everyone, long story short, everyone contributes to make Fremont a welcoming community. It's full of opportunities and experiences. There's a buzz here at Fremont when you're walking around the hallways, and it's unmatched. And I'm proud to be part of our amazing staff and community of Fremont.
Thank you very much. Yes. Does anyone have any questions or anything they'd like to add?
I have two. I would, I'm interested in what the improvement goal is for math and language. What's the goal for this year? What, in comparison to where we are on this chart or where we were last year?
So we had a big goal last year to increase about 7% in our, talking about S back, in our S back scores. We didn't meet the 7%, so we're still shooting to hit that again this year in both reading and math.
Is that a cumulative over two years or in a single year?
In a single year. Because we didn't meet our goal last year. So we're going to keep working on that.
Okay. And a second question I had is, and this isn't I got you because you're doing a great job and the school is too, but why are we below state average?
In?
In math and language. Pardon? We're above and below?
Yeah.
Oh. Okay, well, I can't read the chart. I'm not colorblind.
You did almost catch me because I thought I was looking at it wrong.
Okay, so why are we above the state average?
Because our teachers are working really hard. They're putting a lot of work in and, and it's starting to show.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Just a reminder, if you are planning on participating in public participation, please fill out a card at the back of the room. And at this time, we have our wonderful RHS Leadership Report. Usually, we have Ryan Wilson, but he's busy playing Macbeth. So I'm sure he has a rehearsal this evening. But we have Emma Rethwell, and she's filling in for him. And then we also have Janelle Melling. So take it away, girls.
Is it on? There we go. Thank you so much for having us again. We're excited to give you our update for this evening. So starting off with student body events, we're having a salute to service assembly honoring the veterans in our community and nation on November 20th in the oxygen. Staff members and Ms. Pitts and Mrs. Hunt orchestrated this event. It's a new assembly that we've never had before. So we're really excited because it's a really great cause. Our tech committee has also been working on making a cool video asking students what veterans, veterans mean to them. Our art committee has also been working on making posters for the assembly, such as one that has all the branches and another one with messages showing support for veterans. So it's a little competition to see who can get the best poster. So that's been fun.
And parent conferences were also held last Thursday and Friday, which went amazing. There was plenty of organizations volunteering to help out, such as Link Crew, the National Honor Society, and of course, leadership itself. The healing tree planting ceremony, we did this a few weeks ago. It represented suicide awareness and went really well. We had a lot of people attend, and it was really amazing in order to bring awareness. And there was a huge turnout from the community members, from students passing by to special guests invited who have lost family members or friends to suicide here in the community. The tree stands proudly on our campus now.
This last Monday, we also had our annual science fair in the Rose Theater where students were able to see science teachers do cool tricks and experiments, all with the power of science. One of the highlights was some students got the chance to safely be lit on fire by teachers. In December, we're also having our winter week with winter themed dress up days and lunchtime activities. So that's starting to, the planning is getting started for that. Macbeth opens this week with free student preview tomorrow at 7:00 PM. And showtimes Friday and Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 2:00 PM this next weekend, and then the following weekend as well. Doors open at 6:30 and all shows are in the Rose Theater.
Now we will be moving on to clubs and extracurriculars. So the robotics, robotics held a meet last week in the gym, Meet Zero, and it was a really good success and turnout. Teams from SOAR, the Southern Oregon Area Robotics Conference, all came to Rosenberg to essentially test out their robots, their robots for the first time, as opposed to getting into some serious competition. Overall, it was success for our two teams. The National Honor Society induction will be held December 4th in the Rose Theater to officially confirm the membership of all those who applied and got in. The Family, Community, and Career Leaders of America Club is also doing our annual food drive for the winter, where each classroom tries to raise the most food, and the top three classes get prizes, AKA yummy donut party. Hannah DeMan, sorry, I think I said that right, of Rosenberg Future Farmers of America, got eighth in the nation, which is so cool and amazing way to represent, for Plant Systems at the National Convention.
Now moving on to sports and athletics, the Roseburg Marching Ensemble had their state competition in Hillsborough two Saturdays ago. They set a new school record for placement, and Director Mr. Hanson has expressed that this year's crew was the best he's ever worked with. They've also had their Platinum Arrow Show last Monday on Finley Field, where graduating seniors were recognized as well. They also were in the Veterans Day Parade in downtown Roseburg yesterday. Now the bands are officially in concert season. Roseburg Football concluded their season with a Halloween victory against Springfield High School and a three-game win streak overall.
Girl soccer made it to the playoffs this season and faced off against...
Twalton.
Twalton, okay. On November 1st for their first playoff game. Boys soccer also played South Eugene on their senior night on Finley Field. Volleyball concluded their season with senior night wideout against Sheldon. Senior Daisy Gargovich, Gard, Gargovich, I think that's right, okay, was also voted Oregon's top setter. Another amazing way to represent.
Cross country also concluded this year with sending one girl Riley McLaughlin and one boy Ethan Smith to state. They raced last Saturday. Winter sports, wrestling, girls and boys basketball, and swim are set to begin soon. Teams have already begun holding informational meetings and open gyms and practices for the upcoming season. With that, that's all we have for you, if there's any questions.
Any questions? Director Crimmits?
Just had a question on that healing tree. Where is that on the campus?
So that is in between the main building and the student center in that giant area of grass. Do you know what I'm talking about? It's right in there, kind of more towards the main building. So it's in a prominent spot where there's so many students that pass through there. So people see it every day when they walk by.
And it's marked?
It has a little plaque.
A plaque.
Yeah, that our woodshop made.
Great, thank you. What a, what a great way to commemorate. A sad thing.
That was, that was Ryan's baby. Ryan put a lot of work into that. So it was really great of him. But yeah, thank you guys for having me.
You've done a wonderful job, and you got all the hard names, I'm sorry. Maybe next time it will be, you'll get the easy names like Smith and Jones. Okay, yeah, awesome. So thank you so much. We're very proud of you, and thank you for all the good news. Okay, yes. At this time, you know, students and staff are being recognized, and we all have a couple of little ceremonies here. We ask that the award winner stay because we'll have, you'll have your individual picture taken after your award, but we would also like you to stay and have a, all of the winners have a picture with the board. So we would, we would appreciate that if you would stay for that part. At this time, we have Director Bishop. He is going to present the awards for some of our students.
All right. Very good. Our first student is Ella Egenhoff from Green Elementary, a fifth grader. Bring your family, bring your family. Yeah, bring family, friends, all of it. I'm going to read about Ella. Ella is a student who brings a quiet and consistent spirit to school with her each day. She shows kindness and courtesy to her peers and staff, treating everyone with genuine respect and care. Her fifth grade teacher, Mrs. Johnson, says Ella approaches her learning with enthusiasm and determination. She consistently puts forth her best effort, takes pride in her work, and encourages others to do the same. Though she leads quietly, her actions speak volumes. Her calm confidence, gracious attitude, and steady example inspire those around her. Her fourth grade teacher, Ms. Moline, states Ella always does her best and encourages others to do the same. She is kind and respectful to everyone. Green is so proud of Ella and her work to represent the school's brave values each day. She is a true representation of what it means to be a Green Dragon. Congratulations, Ella. Next one is Nathan Clark, eighth grade student from Fremont Middle School. Nathan is an exceptional student who stouts out for his kindness, integrity, and curiosity. He goes out of his way to do what's right, leads by example, and treats everyone around him with respect. Nathan approaches learning with enthusiasm and perseverance, always asking thoughtful questions and seeking to understand more deeply. As a leader in band and in the classroom, Nathan's positivity and work ethic inspire his peers. His teachers describing as a role model, describe him as a role model, polite, caring, and dedicated to both his learning and his school community. Fremont is proud to recognize Nathan Clark as Student of the Month for his outstanding character and contributions. Congratulations, Nathan. Our next student is Paige Heacock, 10th grade student from Roseburg High School. All right. Paige is an exceptional student. She is always cheerful, smiling, and brings positive energy to the classroom. Paige works hard, stays engaged, and is very conscientious about her work. She is humble, kind, and consistently willing to help others. Her politeness, wonderful sense of humor, and ability to get along with everyone make her a great role model. Paige is truly a joy to have in class and an outstanding selection who brightens every day with her enthusiasm and kindness towards others. Congratulations, Paige. Our next student is Samantha Senajon, a 12th grade student from Roseburg High School. To quote one of Samantha's teachers, Samantha is one of the brightest and most exceptional students I have ever had the pleasure of teaching. Other teachers shared that Samantha is an excellent student, consistently demonstrating the same commitment and excellence she brings to all her academic pursuits. Her work is always timely, thorough, and reflects a deep understanding of complex concepts. Samantha, Samantha's thoughtful questions challenged both her teammates and teachers, demonstrating her passion for learning and curiosity that extends beyond the classroom. She has completed all math courses offered at Roseburg High School and additional coursework at Umpqua Community College. Samantha is brilliant, high achieving student who consistently exceeds expectations and is destined for great success in mathematics, science, and any field she pursues. Congratulations, Samantha.
Thank you, Director Bishop. We appreciate that. At this time, we are going to celebrate Tom Popham. He's a custodian at Fremont Middle School. So Fremont folks, Tom, where are you? Come on up. Family, friends, students? Wonderful. Great, nice to see you, Tracy. Good. Okay. Tom Popham is one of Fremont's true behind the scenes heroes. Always three steps ahead, Tom is incredibly thorough and dependable. He anticipates needs, solves problems before they arise, and somehow manages to keep an entire campus running smoothly. He's known for responding even when he's off the clock and for tackling every task, big or small, with care and dedication. Beyond his daily responsibilities, Tom builds strong relationships with students and staff. He's even mentoring a student from RHS, helping him learn valuable job skills he can carry into future employment. Fremont is better every day because of Tom's hard work, kindness, and constant willingness to go above and beyond. His crystal apple reads grit, heart, and get it done energy. Thanks, Tom. Congratulations. And next, we have Kate Maddox from Green Elementary. She's a pre-K teacher. So Kate, come on up. Your fam, bring your family, your teachers. Are you Kate? Congratulations. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. The more the merrier, right? Green staff and students proudly recognize Kate Maddox for her outstanding commitment to early childhood education. Her passion for teaching shines through in every classroom activity, nurturing curiosity and confidence in our youngest learners. Beyond her own classroom, Kate shares her expertise generously. She guides parents, staff, and fellow teachers by modeling best practices and current research while uplifting everyone around her. This year, Kate took on the role of starting a storytime for young families in the community. You may have seen this in the news. It is quickly growing into a place where our future dragons can begin to see themselves as brave. Thank you for your hard work, patience, and love of Green Elementary. And her crystal apple reads hatching wonderful futures. love of Green Elementary. And her crystal apple reads hatching wonderful futures for all kids. Congratulations Kate. Do you, um, Green staff, you may want to stay because our next one is also from Green. We have Justina Myler. She is specialized support center instructional assistant. So Justina, where are you? Are you already here? Where are you? Oh, there you are. Come on up. This year's award goes to someone whose heart and dedication make a difference every single day. Justina has a gift for seeking the unique strengths in every child. She's the kind of person who is always thinking ahead, making sure everything is ready before anyone even asks. If something needs to be done, she's the first to step in, always giving her full effort with care and pride. Estimates for how many steps Justina gets in a day are close to a million. Her love for working with students with disabilities is clear in everything she does, and she's following that passion as she works towards becoming a special education teacher herself. Her kindness, determination, and unwavering commitment to her students make her truly deserving of this recognition. Her crystal apple reads she can see the potential and find the unique strength in every student. Congratulations Justina. And I have one more from Fremont. I got these out of order, I apologize, but this is gonna be good. Ella Taggart, eighth grade language arts teacher, leadership teacher, and web coordinator. Ella is a remarkable educator whose dedication, positivity, and leadership shine through in everything she does. In addition to teaching language arts, she serves as one of Fremont's web coordinators, leadership teacher, and volleyball coach, roles through which she has made tremendous contributions to the school's culture and sense of community. Ella's creativity and commitment are evident in the many ways she engages students and staff. She recently led a successful walkathon that raised around thirteen thousand dollars for Fremont. Yeah, go ahead and clap, that's good. That is an incredible achievement that benefits the entire school. Whether she's organizing events, creating inclusive spaces, or simply greeting everyone with a smile and kind word, Ella goes beyond, above and beyond to make Fremont a place where people feel proud to belong. Fremont is so grateful for all that she does. And her crystal apple reads making Fremont awesome. One smile, event, and miracle at a time. Congratulations Ella. At this time, um, I would like all of the recipients of awards to come forward, please. If you won an award, whether you're a student or a teacher, would you please come forward so we can have a photograph with the board? Okay, um, we will take a short break. For those of you who don't want to stay for the business portion of the meeting, you're welcome to leave. Um, and then if you haven't, if you're wanting to speak and you haven't filled out a participation card, please do that, and we will resume the meeting in just a few minutes. Thank you. Welcome back. So at this time, we have public participation. There are a few things that I need to just kind of remind you of. Um, and that is that, um, when you speak, you speak for yourself. You know, you can't speak for a group. You're speaking for yourself. You get three minutes. We as a board decided that two minutes was not really long enough. So we're, we're giving everybody three minutes. It seems like not very long, but that's what we have to do. Um, we, um, you can offer objective criticism of operations and programs, but the board will not hear personal complaints concerning personnel or against any persons connected with the school system, including students and staff. So you can't name names. So please be mindful of that. Assistant Superintendent Michelle Nie will explain the process, including if you're online and you want to speak. I don't think we have anybody online though that let us know that, but, but, um, she will take care of all of that. She will also have a timer, as you can see on the screens, for the three minutes so that you get a heads up that, well, I better start winding this down. So, um, anyway, um, also, if you do not get to finish your presentation, please email it to us. We want, we want to know what you have to say. I do want to let you know that also that we don't ask questions during this. We don't ask questions. We don't go back and forth. This is just our time to listen to you. So please don't think that we're insensitive or mean or whatever. That's just not how this process works. So we'll listen, and when your three minutes is up, you can sit down and someone else can speak. So thank you so much. We value your perspective and look forward to what you have to say. Michelle?
All right. Thank you. So I will let you know who is coming up to speak and who is on deck to speak next, so you are prepared. Um, the timer will start when you start speaking, um, and an alarm will go off when your three minutes is up. So please be respectful of the person coming after you and finish up your comments when the alarm goes off. Um, and we're gonna start with John Pritchard and, um, Kate, is it Jordan? Jordan? Okay. Kate Jordan and Zach Jordan, you'll be on deck. Okay?
Also as a reminder, don't forget to push the button for the mic to start. We, we need to, because the people online won't be able to hear you. So.
Okay.
And then turn it off when you're done. Great. Thank you.
Uh, my name's John Pritchard. My, I'll keep it brief and short. My daughter goes to Fullerton Four, and it's been brought to my attention that there's, uh, persistent bullying and harassment going on. She's had personal belongings stolen from her multiple times. Um, the principal has been made aware of the situation. Other parents reached out to us and just asked us to voice our concern for the fourth grade class at Fullerton Four. And that's what I'm doing. There's a problem there, and we as the community need to come up with some sort of solution, and that's what I'm asking you to do. Thank you.
Right. Kate and Zach, and then, um, Matia Heacock, you will be on deck.
Hello, my name is Zach Jordan, and I go to Fullerton Four Elementary. I have some concerns about my school. It is super noisy and disruptive most of the time. I am not learning anything most of the time. Flirting is no longer fun anymore. Rec recesses are too short and classes are too big. The waterfalls taste terrible. The breakfasts and lunches are too short. In the classroom, people are very aggressive and there's too much yelling. The bathrooms usually have water on the floor and the walls have toilet paper on them. So please, if you could fix these problems, that would be great, and thank you for taking this time to help Fullerton Four Elementary School.
Okay, so my name is Kate Jordan, and we live at 3359 West Harvard Avenue. Is that what I'm supposed to do? Yes. The last five years, my children have attended Fullerton Elementary School. Everyone here at Fullerton, if you want to raise your hands or stand up, you're more than welcome to. Um, my oldest son has always had a very large class and have had some behavioral issues. In the past years, they've split those classes up between three teachers and extra IAs. In August, I had brought up our concerns about having two classes. I'd even been contacting Jill Weber over email and phone. I'm not the type of person to just sit back and complain. I've stepped into volunteering as much as humanly possible with three children. I've asked other parents to come in and volunteer and give their time, energy, and even financial help. Our teachers and staff at Fullerton are incredible. Ms. Waschwager is the greatest strength, or example of strength I have ever seen in another educator. I feel like she is teaching only out of survival. She could be bonding and joining this school year with her students, but most of the time I'm witnessing her just managing. I've seen this firsthand, and I've even seen students just leave the classroom. It's very distracting. The amount of actual classwork is minimal. What I am hoping is to give assistance to Ms. Waschwager and Mr. Crane by asking the board to bring on two IAs and implement in-school suspension for students that are having behaviors and getting sent to the office. And what's happening is they come back and they're still really dysregulated. Um, let's see if I can get to the end. Um, I would like Fullerton to get back to a community that makes a difference in our children's lives. I truly believe in my heart that if we can turn things around in this school year, I think there's even enough time in this school year with a commitment from you guys to fix things. Thank you so much, Mr. Corden and Mr. Cubic.
Matia Heacock, you're up. And Anna Heacock, you're on deck.
Hi, my name is Matia Heacock, and I live at 126 Long Meadows Lane, Roseburg, Oregon. I used to go to Fullerton Four Elementary School, and I left because it was hard to learn, and there were about thirty kids in my class. Almost everyone was disrespectful, and it made me feel like everyone was out of control. We had access to computers in case we're watching YouTube instead of doing their work. And when the teacher came, they would very, very quickly switch it back to their work. Sometimes kids would not get their way and get mad and call the teacher a bad word and run out of the classroom. After school, I would ask my family if I could move, but not because the teachers were being mean or people were being mean, just because I felt frustrated, angry, and anxious that I didn't get a good enough education. When I left, I didn't want to go 'cause it, um, I went there since kindergarten and I made good friends. I hope that my old class gets a good assistant for the teacher, and I think that fourth and fifth graders should get another classroom, so there won't be so much kids in one class. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anna Heacock. I am at 126 Long Meadows Lane in Roseburg as well. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak today. Um, we have been a Fullerton Four family for nine years, and I am here today on behalf of myself, but also my neighbors and my community. Um, many teachers and families are here tonight as well, representing Fullerton. At the beginning of the school year, I was shocked to hear that a teaching position for fourth grade had been reassigned, um, cutting that group down to two classrooms instead of three, and creating those two very large classes. Uh, as a parent, that has been in and out of the classrooms over the years. I have observed this particular group of students grow and witnessed the tumultuous years that they have journeyed through so far. Uh, they've had multiple mid-year teacher changes over the years, lots of long-term subs, seems like a high ratio of behavioral and emotional challenges. It's been a struggle since kindergarten with this particular group of kiddos. Um, this is a group of students that really requires a lot of extra support and lower class sizes to thrive. Unfortunately, our family had to make the decision earlier this fall to pull our fourth grader that just spoke, uh, pull her out of the school, as we did not feel that it was a safe environment any longer for her, and did not seem to be any hope of timely extra support for these children after reaching out to various administrators. after reaching out to various administrators. It is not lost on me in saying that, that we are one of the few have, that have the resources to make that decision. And it was a very difficult decision for us to make in light of that, after our family has been an active part of that community for so many years. And really despite leaving this year, we still consider ourselves a Fullerton family and really have a heart for the, the teachers and the families that are there. I ask on behalf of the parents, the students, the teachers, that we've grown to love, that you investigate the learning environment at Fullerton four and consider providing extra resources for Fullerton four, specifically the fourth grade class. An IA in each room and staff support for disciplinary issues such as in-school suspension or alternative room for behavior support and redirection would be wonderful. Everyone is just stretched really thin over there. And I want to make sure that you're hearing it. This is not saying anything bad about any of the staff. They are wonderful. They are wonderful. It's, it is a difficult group of kids and they need support. This particular class desperately needs a review of a multi-tiered support for students and a review of their progressive discipline plans when behaviors disrupt a classroom environment as well. In agreement with your strategic plan for the district, the goal is to provide exceptional learning environments that are safe and inclusive for all. And it would also give these amazing teachers the support needed to do their jobs well. Bottom line, we would like a safe place where kids can learn and teachers can teach. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for, for your input. We, we appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Do we have any others, Michelle? Okay. No other cards were submitted. Thank you very much. And now we will move on to our regular board meeting. If, if you guys want to leave, feel free to quietly get up and leave. You're welcome to stay if you would like. But Superintendent Corden, would you do the review of the agenda and communications to the board?
I will. Thank you, Madam Chair, and appreciate the comments so far. I will just add the agenda. We do have two additional resignations to have, be aware of. Those are, have been added to your consent agenda. And other than that, that will conclude the communications and review at this point.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Okay, we have a motion by Director Bishop. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. We have a presentation. S and B James Construction Company has a presentation for us. We have project executive Mike Jardine. Is he here? He is.
Yeah.
Can you turn on the mic, please?
How about that?
Yes.
I asked for a big check. This is all they sent. I was hoping like publishers clearing house there. This is from S and B James. We want to present this to Roseburg School District for their athletic program for kids that cannot afford equipment or to join the programs. We know that some of those kids, that's the only reason they're in school. But this is on our relationship we have with Roseburg and our commitment to the community. And we just hope that it helps some kids.
Thank you.
Wish we would have done that before everyone left. I wasn't thinking. And Terry Mackey? Thank you. Thank you. We, we are so blessed in this community to have some remarkable people that support our kids. And we're just very grateful. Thank you. Okay, so we have next our OSBA, which is the Oregon School Board Association Legislative Policy Committee, which is called LPC. Position number nine, it's for Douglas South Coast Region. And as you know, we have nominated our director, Steve Hammerson, as a candidate for that. And it has gone through and now we are able to vote. So I would entertain a motion to approve Director Steve Hammerson as our candidate for OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, position number nine for Douglas South Coast Region. Do I have a motion?
No move.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any discussion? Great. No discretion, discussion. All those in favor? Aye? It's unanimous. Motion carries.
Let the record note that I am abstaining from voting because it's a conflict of interest, but.
Okay. Let the record show that. But yeah, so he will, Janet will actually fill out the paperwork that submits our vote to OSBA in the favor of Director Hammerson. At this time, we will go, move on to item four. It's a consideration proposed for our calendar for the 26-27 school year. As you know, that comes before the board every year. And Assistant Superintendent Michelle Nie gathered with the calendar committee. And this is a committee that is a good representation of school principals, the union, other department individuals who provide additional insight as to the instructional perspective, because you have a lot of things you have to consider. So, and they have actually reviewed this and are recommending a start date for 26-27 of August 31st, which is before Labor Day. So thank you for you and everyone who worked on that. So I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed school year calendar for 2026 and 2027, as recommended by the calendar committee.
Any discussion before we vote?
No. First of all, we're going to have a second and then we're going to have discussion. So is there a second?
I will make the motion if somebody else.
Oh, the motion. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Okay, we, we have the motion and we have the second. And, and so we have discussion?
I hear from a lot of people that are sometimes frustrated that school extends into mid-June. And I'm of the opinion, and I've heard from a lot of people in the community, that people are excited to go to school at the beginning. They're not as excited to be in school at the end. I think starting earlier and getting out earlier is a good move for the community and those with student aged children as well.
I'd like to add that I reached out to some current and retired educators and our community and the consensus of feedback that I got supported the recommendation, supported the pre-Labor Day start for a range of reasons. And you reviewed one of them that's very important that I heard also several places. And so I support this motion. I think it'll be beneficial and operationally, the assessment that was given us is very helpful.
You, any other discussion?
Yeah, I would agree with that. With Labor Day following, ending or hitting on the seventh, that is quite a ways into September. And so starting the earlier start date that the committee recommended of August 31st is close enough to December, or September, that I think it's a, it's a good fit for, for meeting our needs and, and for the parents in our community.
Yes?
I didn't have to reach out to anybody because I was at the meeting. I, there's some things that you don't think about in these, you know, committee, committee meetings about, or the calendar committee, unless you have the professionals that are there that live it, such as conference days. I mean, there's a lot of thought that goes in the thing. So I just kind of sat back, listened to them and let the ones who live this make the decision and I support it. So it's definitely the right thing to do.
I just, I have one, one thing. I'm just wondering, how did the teachers respond to this, this change? Because it's, it's affecting them because they have to be here, you know, the week before Memorial or before Memorial weekend. So was there any response from them or were they for it or against?
So every couple of years, Labor Day is later in September. So we bounce back and forth depending on where it falls normally. So actually with the calendar we've got set for next year, it falls really close to where we're at this year as far as where we start and where we end. And, but the teachers' union was represented there and had conversations with them. And they always like a little more time, but actually they enjoy getting out. They're happy with getting out earlier in June as well. It's more of that.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, discussion? If not, all those in favor? Aye? Okay. It looks like motion, motion carries. Thank you so much. At this time, we will enter into item number five, committee reports. We'll start with curriculum and instruction with Director Krimmets.
Yes, the curriculum and instruction met October 15th. As you could hear from Principal Jarden's report, it's very important, the assessment that we do. And, and our district uses several tools to assess our students and see where they're at. This is the first part of the year, so we were getting really a baseline to see where they're, where they're, where we're starting out this year. And, and we're seeing that already there's some good forward progress happening. It's not as fast. It's, it's not a sharp increase, but it is slow and steady and it is moving in the direction that we really have really wanted our district to go. And, and the staff and the teachers are working their hardest to accomplish that purpose for our students' sake. We had a number, a significant number of kindergarten students coming in that we're, we're really targeting them early on to get them on a, off to a very good, strong start. Some of them have not had maybe the potential in their families of maybe reading to them. And so they may be coming in at a lower level, but we are quickly targeting that and getting them up to snuff so that by second grade, we really want our students to be good readers. And that is our, one of our chief goals here. So we also found that with the math focus, that Oregon's math standards are really, our standards are higher than a lot of states. So we are requiring a lot from them, even in the math field. So when you look at some of the numbers or some of the assessments that you might have heard, we are, we are targeting and really tackling these things on a very solid footing and, and we're going forward. And it's great to see. We are, we are happy with the data that we've received from the teaching and learning. And we're encouraged and we want you to be encouraged to.
Thank you very much, Director Krimmets. Director Cotton, would you please give us an update with building and sites, please?
This building and sites met on the 29th and we are continuing our tours of the buildings. We did Fremont and Fair Grove. And this is helping us build priorities on what, what really needs to be done and what can, can last. And I'm becoming an expert on boilers. So we will meet again next week, I think, at Roseburg High School. That's it.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to share a few things with you today or this evening. So I just want to say I'm, I'm super proud of our, of our staff and our students, our community members. We live in a special place and hope tonight to share a couple of things on my mind about how to continue to help support our students moving forward. Got a great picture here. If you haven't been down to City Hall, Erin Rose. If you haven't seen that, was painted by a local artist. Take a look at these pictures real quick. I know maybe people in the audience can't see them that well, but as we were putting this presentation together, I was thinking about, you know, just how special the kids are in our community. They really represent what we value the most, I hope, in this community. Each one is precious. They're amazing. We've got some kids at the top of Melrose who had a carnival. We've got our FFA students there at Veterans Day on the parade, celebrating 250 years of keeping the country safe. We've got students on a trip up to the U of O. And our kids have been out doing great things and we're grateful for them and our staff as well. I want to give you a bit of a budget update tonight. It's just kind of the majority of my message tonight. And it's, I don't think we're at a spot of alarm, but I will tell you this message is concerning. And it's causing many of us to maybe lose more hair than they have already lost in their life a little bit. I kind of colored my hair for you tonight, gray, just to have an emphasis on this. But it is a little bit concerning. So the state of Oregon issue, like we know, if you've been watching the media, is, has a concerning budget trajectory right now. And they have alerted all state agencies, including the Oregon Department of Education, to plan for and prepare for a two and a half to five percent reduction. I have been in contact with the Oregon Department of Education, the Governor's Office, our own cabinet group and others have been working on kind of what this means for us. Now, any reduction is not good, but particularly a potential mid-year reduction is even more complicated. Those who were here in the 08 years likely remember a mid-year reduction in the Great Recession in Oregon. And it's complicated if you have to make reductions in the mid-year. I think what's important to realize is that the state, state trajectory of budget is complicated and it is a little bit concerning. I anticipate that we're probably going to have to make some reductions at some point during the biennium. I bring this out just not to create alarm, but to let you know that we are closely watching the situation with budget right now. There are a couple of key dates coming up to be aware of. The Oregon Department of Education recently came out with a proposal list that they'll present to the legislature on the 18th of November in terms of divestments at a two and a half and five percent level. And they're not good. These are some of the things they've identified are really key for us. CTE in particular, they had FFA. There were other things on there that are really key strategic board investments and priorities that have made that list. Whether the legislature adopts those is questionable at this point. So the 18th is something to keep an eye on. Most importantly will be the 19th of November and that's when the, the economic revenue forecast is going to be released. And this is going to be a really key report. Because if it, if it looks more optimistic, I think Oregon will take a little different stance. Then they will if it looks flat, but particularly if it looks more depressing in nature. I think it will move the state into action. It's worth noting that no decisions have been made at the state legislature level. I'll reiterate, when this, when the legislature reconvenes in the short session in February, that is when decisions will be made. The complication of that is if there's a recommendation to reduce in the current year, that late in the year, there's kind of a multiplier effect that we just have to kind of watch. It is worth noting, and I would. It is worth noting, and I would, I would, we certainly have been advocating as a district, this will likely, I will probably encourage many of our leaders and including and probably especially our board members to remind our legislators that there are two sources of revenue that have been set aside for exactly these moments. There is an education stability fund that I think has somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.2 to 1.3 billion dollars. I believe it was started in 2002. It's been used multiple times. I counted nine times it's been used since 2002. And it's to provide stability when we get into these funding waves, like a cosine or a sine wave. That actually can be put into effect simply by the governor saying it's going to affect. Also can be in, in effect with a three-fifth majority vote. The other one is there is this rainy day fund, which is cresting a little over $2 billion in the state. The revenue forecast, if it does look like a rainy day, I would highly encourage the legislature to consider the rainy day fund. So those are things we need to be aware of, we need to look at. As we, as we think forward, is, as you know, and as you expect, I hope, will be contingency planning, a variety of different things, just as thinking ahead in terms of what this might look like. But no decisions yet, but we, if you've been watching the media, many school districts are starting to make adjustments in the current year and also for the 26, 27 year. Seen Portland Public talk about a $50 million gap, seen Salem Kaiser talk about a $25 million gap. Four J has been moving and making adjustments. Corvallis has been reorganizing the way they're looking at things. So we, we will be prudent and closely watching the situation. And, and we'll be actively involved with our legislators on both sides of the aisle and the Governor's Office in this, as well as ODE. We switch gears here and talk a little bit about the student health survey. So today, an email went out to parents and guardians of sixth, eighth and 11th grade students in regard to the student health survey. The student health survey was developed in 2020 and it was, it's been, I think, two years now since the legislature made, made it required that all students are offered the opportunity to take the student health survey. As you likely remember, last year, we took a little different approach, the board's guidance, to make this a more home-centered approach. There are some very sensitive topics for sixth, eighth and 11th graders. And there are some questions that I've expressed a variety of opinions to people at, at the Oregon Health Department about this. In ODE, there are just some questions that there's a, the methodology to the survey, which can be a little bit perplexing and maybe not appropriate for every student. And as a reminder, this is really a survey for the health department. We don't receive individual information about individual students. And so when you're asking about questions like suicidal ideation and asking a student about suicidal ideation, and we don't know who the student was, that said, yeah, I've thought about that before. But there's questions in there that are, are complicated around gender and sexuality that we have made, I think wisely, the decision to have this be, just be, if, if a parent decides to take this, that it would be done alongside a parent or guardian at home. So we'll be moving forward with that. Information went out to sixth, eighth, 11th grade parents. It is optional. It's not required that students take it. Is just a point of reference, last year, we had 1,275 students that were in grades six, eight and 11. And believe we had 35 parents who decide, who took the survey. And so it was about a little under 3%. And I've shared that with the Department of Education and the Health Authority that
3% took it?
Yeah, a little under 3%. Actually, you took that. So what we'll be doing is sending the link home. It can be administered at home. Again, it's not required. There is no opt-out. If it's delivered in school, it requires an opt-out and kind of a complicated, cumbersome process. And again, from a transparency standpoint and from a standpoint of just respecting parents as the first and most important teacher, we think this is the right approach and we'll be offering it in the same manner this year. Almost lastly, I would just want to talk real quick about our partnership with the college. We continue to grow our partnership with the college. The college, we have a unique relationship with the college. We are co-developing and co-planning and partnering with the college in a pretty unique way. And we have a common view that is, it's the expectation of our community, we believe, and our school systems to ensure that students leave our schools with a plan for a successful future. And particularly in those high wage, high demand careers. We've been partnering with our local industries, looking at our local economy, asking business owners, seeing where gaps are in our workforce. And we've been kind of bucking the trend of scholarshiping kids to leave the community. And thinking, what would happen if kids were able to stay? And I'm just proud to say, as we kind of move forward and continue to move forward in the college in many areas, including in our advanced medical pathways, that we, we are doing something special for our community. I sit on the hospital board at Mercy. Mercy on that role, we just hired 50, or there were 50 graduates, excuse me, from UCC in the nursing program. Mercy hired 38 of the 50 students. These are students that have come through our program. They have a guaranteed job in the community, a high wage, high demand job in the community, and effectively for most of the students, very little to any debt. And so as we continue to think about the opportunities around radiology tech, surge tech, other opportunities, we feel it is a, it is the right work for students. And so we're excited to continue this partnership with them and moving forward and, and in different and unique ways in the community. Lastly, I just want to just give a shout out. We had Veterans Day yesterday. You know, we, I'm grateful to live in a community that isn't bashful about their appreciation for our veterans, the appreciation for the Constitution. We're happy to wave the flag here. We don't, we're not embarrassed by that. We're proud of that. And it makes me grateful to live in a community that is patriotic. And, and I, I would also just mention that, you know, if you haven't been to the high school yet and seen the flag planting, our high school students have raised money for the veterans. You can see this all throughout our schools, that there is a focus on the people who help us, give us the opportunity to be in schools, to think about our future. And that happens because of people who have dedicated their life to make sure we can live in a country that can have the freedoms that it does. I would also just make mention that the work in our career pathways are directly tied to our support of our veterans. We think about the, the medical pathways that we're providing in the VA. The really, you can say we respect our veterans, but I believe our, our, our school system is doing something unique to ensure that those jobs are filled. Those medical positions are filled with people who can support our veterans. To conclude, I think Matt has to hit the button here. It was mentioned in the report by RHS students about our band. It's an award-winning band. And there's a short clip. Thank you, Ryan Finley, from the tracker who took this. I'll just end this with this about one minute video. If you didn't get a chance to go to the parade, got RHS kids, about this one minute clip that are kind of a highlight in the parade. So take it away, Matt.
One of my favorite parts of those young girls in the very front, you can see them at the bottom.
Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing that. I did watch it when online, but that was great. We have it here for everyone to see. So thank you so much. We are going to continue with our, our director reports. So I think I'll start on this side. Director Hammerson, do you have anything that you would like to report?
So I had a quick question for Jared. But yeah, I know a year ago with the health survey, we didn't know where the information was going or what OHA, OHA was doing with the information. Is that still a situation? We don't know who they can provide the information to. We don't, they don't tell us where the information goes for those surveys.
We receive a summary report, but it would be, you know, for example, just the, the overall kind of meta-analysis of that, but it's not down to the micro level. So I, I believe pretty strongly it's used for a data point for, for advocating for OHA. And oftentimes for, it could even just be for specific topics within that survey that are important to certain legislators.
Okay. All I really had was, I just kind of wanted to reiterate, whether it's Jared being informed about the budget stuff that we're dealing with, that that's out of our control, that's happening at a state level, or it's us as a board dealing with the, it's scary, right? The budget stuff's scary. The building stuff is, is kind of scary too. But we're, we're all making great effort to stay informed on how we can deal with it and how we can triage it. So I just, I just want to say, I commend to you and, and the rest of the board, you know, for doing our learning walks at all the buildings and making sure that we understand what, where the battery's empty and where the battery's, you know, cosmetic or whatever the situation may be. So you know, I, I appreciate that we're all working very hard to, to stay informed and understand what we're up against, even if it's, it looks like a storm coming.
Director Bishop?
Nothing for the benefit of the children.
Thank you.
A couple of little things I'd just like to note. Saturday, the 5th, there was a community garden enhancement group activity. The gate was opened by the garden and there was a good number of community members, teachers and others who went to the garden, reconditioned it, got it ready for the winter. They were there for several hours and really worked hard. And I thought it was a really nice outreach to the school and for those people to be involved with something else that's happening at the school. That, and then also with three out of Fullerton four, there's 330 people, 330 kids, more or less in that school. And a happy Halloween. I had 208 kids come to my house on Halloween night. That's like two thirds of the kids in the school. I think there were others from other neighborhoods. And then finally, I would like to just ask that the comments we receive about class size and issue of behavior management at Fullerton, I'd hope that we'll get a follow-up report on action items or things that are, will help the faculty and management their addresses, concerns.
Director Cotton?
Why, part of S and D James is still here. I think they should be recognized. You recognized us tonight with a fabulous check. But the work that you do in the district has, has just been fantastic. And I hope that we have a long relationship. It's, it's tough to get folks that you can really rely on and trust. So we wanted to do that. I do agree with Keith. I would like a follow-up. You know, we don't comment during public participation. And we need to be very careful afterwards. But the kids were very impressive. I'm sure they studied and studied and studied, but they were great. But I would like to, I'd like to have a follow-up. Just, just because I think it's important. And when you showed the UCC, the, the, what the new building's going to look like and the color, where they're remodeling one of the, I've told you this, remodeling one of the older buildings for, what's it going to be? Yeah. And they're using those colors. It's really sharp. And some folks just have a hard time with change. But special, so I, I think it's going to be great. And I do appreciate the board and Jared, I really appreciate you keeping us informed.
Director Krimmets?
I just really enjoyed that last presentation. It's so important, I think, for our younger generation to be aware of and participate in things like that. And the fact that our schools seem to really take that to heart, it's really heartening to me to know that it's important in our community and may that continue. So whatever part that our schools can continue to play in that, I, I would strongly promote that you do so. And, you know, encourage the principals to keep up that, that effort. And also just appreciate being here at Fremont. And we're seeing, you know, work that needs to be done, but also encourage that our kids are, the little gal that sang the anthem, that was really impressive. To, you know, we have some really great kids and it's always great to visit the schools and, and get to rub elbows a little bit more so with them. So thank you, parents, for doing a good job with your kids.
I was gonna say the highlight of tonight was that song from that young gal. It was beautifully sung.
It was the heat.
So I thought that was neat.
He's a boy.
Boy?
Yeah. He just had long hair.
So, but I really, really do appreciate that. That was really well done. Also, just the fact that our community just supports our veterans the way they do, the way our, our high school kids are involved in, in that. That is really, really amazing. So, thanks.
So I would like to conclude with just two things. Number one, I want to go back to the health survey. One of the things I appreciate about is how we worked together last year when we were told this is law. And, and it was like, we took a stand on that because we did not feel that it was appropriate for us to get a test. But the other issue for me too, is that is the other clincher for me. That would have been taken from them for no good for their benefit at all. So that being said, the other thing that I am thankful for is that, we were talking about the community and, and it is so precious to see these talented students. But also I am grateful that we have a board and a platform for students to be able to speak to us as well. That was very meaningful. I think it's a good lesson for them on how to be civically involved. How to, I mean, they had to prepare for it. They had to do a lot of things. I don't know that at fourth grade, I would have done something like that. So kudos to them. And I was really glad about that. So. So that concludes all of our regular business at this time. It's concluded and barring no objection, this meeting is adjourned.